September 22, 2022, meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Trebowser?
Here.
And Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: on January 11, 2022, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Raw Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Molnar, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go with the closed session in order to discuss subjects exempt from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters. Any information regarding these closed-session discussions will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar. I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Trebowser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried.
Please rise for a salute to the flag. In a moment of silence, our motive of silence, please keep in mind our deep consolations to the family and the entire community of Linden of a recent passing of one of their students, Xavier McLean, from a tragic injury in a sporting event.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So, a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar, second by Mr. Trebowser. Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Present.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Trebowser?
Here.
And Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Secretary, please read, for the record, any notices, bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. There were no bids received.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative from John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, Harsh Bakar Tare.
Thank you, Mr. President. As someone who is extremely intelligent, personable, and motivated, Harsh is a student who exemplifies the Mustang spirit here at JFK. Harsh is academically exceptional with grades at the top of his class. He has been challenging himself in honors and AP classes since freshman year, and despite a rigorous schedule and the global pandemic, Harsh has performed with strength, determination, and perseverance. Harsh has also proven himself outside of the classroom. Within the walls of our school, Harsh has been very involved. He is a member of the National English Honor Society. Some other activities include Key Club, American Cancer Society Club, Eco Friendly Club, We Evolve Autism Awareness Club, Junior State of America, Math Team, and Varsity Track. His leadership roles are numerous. Harsh is part of the Diversity and Equity Committee. He is the senior class president, and he is captain of the varsity basketball team. Outside of school, Harsh has earned the equivalent to a bachelor's degree in music for an instrument called tabla. He also volunteered extensively at Liberty Science Center. Harsh is quite the accomplished individual. It is a wonder he is able to do all that he does. Harsh plans to pursue a degree in computer science paired with pre-medicine. With his track record, there is no doubt that he will be a true success story. JFK wishes him all the luck in the world as he continues his journey through his senior year and beyond. Harsh, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino, for introducing me. Hello, everyone. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be here. And before I leave to do my homework, I just want to read some of the activities by our schools in our district. So, for School 19, as part of their DEI project last year, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, students and staff were excited to start the new school year off with brand-new sidewalks. The Staples Store in Island received 415 boxes of school supply donations. Richard Lucas Subaru car dealership has adopted Menlo Park Terrace School and donated teacher supplies. They will celebrate, start with Hello Week on September 19 to September 23. Every student will be greeted daily, allowing them to feel seen, cared for, and connected to our school and community. Community members are invited to come and join us in greeting our students each day. On September 30, School 19 will participate in a school-wide PBSIS kickoff, celebrating positive behavior with an assembly and class project. For School Number 29, as part of their DEI projects, they are collecting books to ensure all students have books at home to read. You can drop book donations off at School Number 29, located at 29 Willis Way in Island at door number three, in the labeled container to the right of the door. For my home school, JFK, the Mustangs have kicked off the 2022-2023 school year with our traditional running of the halls and fall pep rally. Students then showed up in their Hawaiian gear to support the football team on Friday, September 9. We held our first Feel Good Friday on September 9. We will be dedicating our Friday mornings to class discussions surrounding the social and emotional needs of our students and working towards decreasing incidence of bullying in our school. The Mustang cheerleaders raised $1,000 at our home football opener for Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation, which helps fund cancer research for children. The cheerleaders also welcomed the Mini Mustangs, who helped with the halftime festivities. The JFK Fall Drama, Almost Maine, will run November 16, 18, and 19. Now, this is just, is what's on the paper, but I can tell you that all of our schools are doing a great job for the activities after our COVID year. I want to thank everyone for allowing me to be here, and I hope this goes really well. Thank you.
Thank you, Harsh, for your excellent report. You're surely welcome to stay for the board meeting, but if you have to be home for homework or anything, we totally understand. We won't be offended.
Thank you.
Please excuse me. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of township in which you reside, along with a specific agenda item number you wish to discuss, as per Regulation 1100D. Comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak.
Welcome back to the new school year. I'm sure it's going to be very successful. And my comments tonight regarding finance and insurance. Point number two, something I speak about often, we're still funding the debt of $419,530,000 on a monthly basis to pay down the bond debt. What exactly is included in that bond debt? Were not new schools four and five to be included in that? And what is the status of those schools? If the money isn't being spent on them, where is it going? That's my question.
Is that your only question, Mr. Maris?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wolfman?
Mr. Maris, the debt that you're referring to, the debt service funding, is from actually bonds that go back a ways to projects that we've done since 2002. So, those bonds lasted as much as 30 years, so the payments continue through today, some of which is also related to the past ones for windows. The ones you're referring to for School Four and Five was done differently, so it is not part of this.
It's not part of that, and this debt service is not going to that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Then what is it going to? Besides, $419,000 a month is a lot of money. Thirty-year bonds were paid off.
Okay, Mr. Maris, you said you were finished. That was your last question. Mr. Wolfman explained it.
I forgot. There's no debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public questions about the agenda? Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
I do, Mr. President. Before I share the recommendations, I just want to share an update with a major piece of the 2020 referendum. I will be sending correspondence out to the community in the upcoming days, but I wanted to use this as an opportunity to start the message. In March of 2020, the township voters approved a referendum that was meant for a number of things: enhanced security, advanced technology, and several major infrastructure projects at many of our schools. The biggest of those projects was a new Avanel Elementary School that was to be constructed on Rowway Avenue. A few days after that referendum passed, we were struck with COVID. The pandemic obviously changed our world, and the projects were put on hold for quite some time. Our district was able to start some of the larger projects roughly 18 months later, and the six acres at Rowway Avenue that was the site of the new elementary school for Avanel, that work had commenced. Recently, the Board and I met with AECOM. They were the architects that were responsible for the planning and construction of the new elementary school, Avanel Elementary School on Rowway Avenue. And unfortunately, some news from them that is going to change how we look at it. They stated to us that they would not be able to complete the project without additional revenue, as well as dramatically changing the scope of the building. They told us the increase in project costs and financing had dramatically changed due to the inflationary cycle that has gripped our country and is exacerbated by supply chain issues, you know, obtaining steel, lumber, some of the interior fit-out items for construction, and that the budget of $35 million that was set almost 30 months ago would have to be roughly $45 million, almost closer to $50,000, by the time we're done with construction. I, along with the Board and the municipality, would just never be comfortable going back out to referendum and asking the public to finance another $15 million. We did sit down and discuss what our options were, and the plan as it stands now is to take the remaining funds that were earmarked for the Avanel School project and put them towards construction and renovations at the current Avanel site. The school already is there. We have two really good examples of how we can manage to do construction and improvements while not disturbing the students and minimizing that disruption. We've done gymnasium, cafeteria, and classrooms at schools like School 25, Lafayette Estates, and School 28, Matthew Jago. So, while it's not the original plan, these circumstances are not circumstances that we chose. They were certainly circumstances that we're trying to manage. Tonight, you will see on the Buildings and Grounds Agenda, we are asking the Board to vote on approving Parret Sanjin Architects to submit a legal proposal that is warranted for us to start the transition of this project. They're going to make that proposal and submit it to the Department of Education, and when the Department of Education gives us their feedback, I will make the community aware of what our next steps look like. But obviously, this was something that nobody could have forecasted 30 months ago. We are still committed to giving the community of Avanel a newer elementary school. I do believe if we follow the model that we followed with the old referendum, whether it was Woodbridge Middle School or the building of this school, while keeping the old school up and really trying to minimize that disruption, which is the goal, I believe we'll be able to do that successfully. So, I just wanted to give the public an opportunity to be aware of that. I will be sharing the updates. The letters I send out in the upcoming days will be posted on our website. And as I said, once I get information back after today's board agenda vote, and, you know, should that pass and that submission be made, from PSA to the state, when we get that information, I will share it with the community accordingly. With regards to the superintendent's agenda, I have 25 items to present to the Board tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Do I have a motion to accept the superintendent's agenda? Motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Policy and planning, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following 22 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I can't read them all. There's so many, but I would ask the public, please take a look at, you know, generally items, you know, one through about 10 here, excuse me, one through about 11. Throughout the summer, there was numerous initiatives and offers of generosity by many members and businesses of this community to support our students getting off on the right foot for the new school year through school donation supplies, monetary donations, and then, you know, some sweat equity in terms of running, you know, backpacking school supply giveaways. So, I just wanted to recognize all those resolutions that recognize these people for helping our students get off on the right foot. As the old saying goes, it takes a village. So, please take a look at those items, one through 11. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Curriculum agenda, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following 10 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Finance and insurance agenda, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 13 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Technology agenda, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Buildings and grounds agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator present the following three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Transportation agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
I will be abstaining on item number seven, yes on all other items.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Personnel agenda, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following. Tonight, I'll be moving 55 items.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
On item 47, I will be abstaining on the name of Linda Trebowser, yes on all other items.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Bush, do we have any recommendations?
Don't at the start.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? Any new business that should be brought to the attention of the Board?
Mr. Harris? I'm stumbling on your name today. I don't know what's going on there. Couple things. I want to thank Dr. Massimino this evening. I've been working with him all week long about getting, here's the name, the RX Abuse Leadership Initiative Trailer. It's going on over at Woodbridge High School this evening. It's a trailer that, it's part of a state, excuse me, a nationwide organization that has a trailer that's designed like a teenager's bedroom, and the purpose of that is for ex-police officers and, you know, drug policy experts sort of inform parents about what it is to look out for in terms of if your children or teenagers are, you know, experimenting or using drugs or engaging in other risky behaviors. So, that's going on over at Woodbridge High School as we speak from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. For those present and perhaps for those watching the live stream, feel free to head on over. This is going until 8:00 p.m., and I just want to thank Dr. Massimino for communicating that to the public. And of course, not that they're listening, but a thanks to the organization for approaching the district about that program. I think that's worthwhile for parents to know all the different things that are going on. For those parents out there who are familiar, these days, I hate to put it so bluntly, the criminals have found ways to hide things in, you know, very discreet packaging and things of that nature that, you know, adults like us wouldn't quite know what to look for. And unfortunately, there are bad people out there who are preying on our children with different things, and so it's important that you, as parents, know what to look out for. Next up, there was some controversy in town a couple weeks ago relative to the "speed kills" sign that's located at the intersection of Main Street and Route 9 in Woodbridge. Through, you know, working with the mayor's office, Dr. Massimino, we've agreed that we will replicate those "speed kills" signs and place them strategically at the three high schools. Student drivers are among the riskiest of drivers, the least experienced, and perhaps, you know, let's all admit, as teenagers, we're sometimes think of ourselves as invincible, right? Lead-footed behind the wheel, so we think it's important that our children understand that, you know, driving safely, buckling up are good, you know, good behaviors that we're going to encourage. And, you know, that was a good resolution that came out of that little controversy there. So, thank you to Dr. Massimino and the administration for making that happen, along with the mayor. And then finally, just a personal item here, and a thanks to the schools in advance. This Saturday is Nashville Public Lands Day. I helped co-coordinate a semi-annual cleanup in Colonia. For those interested in coming out, accruing community service hours, we do that at the Shaughnessy Park in Colonia, at the intersection of Bimman Avenue and Amherst Avenues between 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. It's a great opportunity to just get out, get some fresh air, and beautify our community. So, thank you in advance to those who come out. Thank you, Mr. President, for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of township in which you reside. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance to Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak.
David Pinkowitz, Island. First, I'll just briefly comment, you know, the superintendent's announcement that was made just after the agenda items were discussed but before everything else happened shows why I think it's a better order to have the agenda items discussed at the time of the agenda item, since the members of the public that are here did not have the relevant information to even comment on the agenda item. And now that the Board's voted, it's too late to really have any effective comment on the agenda item. But I do have a question related to that, which I know you'll answer at the conclusion of my other remarks. Maybe two questions. One, will there be a change in the enrollment supported by the Avanel Street School, both based on, you know, the difference between the new construction versus the, you know, renovated school? And then, second, what will happen with the land that is not being used for new construction at this time? Will there be a thought that a new school will go there? We still have a lot of new building going on in the township. The enrollment keeps going up. My kids, the enrollment grew from, I think, like about $12,000 to, I don't know, it's about 14 or so now, and it's just going to keep going up. I don't know that the school buildings can handle all that enrollment as the town keeps allowing, you know, new apartments to go up around the community. All right. But now into my other comments unrelated to that. One, I wanted to talk briefly, this is more for the superintendent, for Mr. Postorino. The definition of class rank, which is a regulation that the superintendent puts out, it hasn't been amended in years, I think about eight years. Few things, without getting into the details of whether we should or shouldn't rank, a couple of things that I think need to get looked at or at least clarified. One, the examples, they're just like word examples. If a student takes senior study, only eight courses will be ranked. If a student takes a zero-hour course, a 10th course, the best 40 credits of course rank points will be calculated. It doesn't explain well or clearly, especially the senior study one, where if I'm, and I don't know exactly what senior study is, but the implication is it's a non-class, a time when seniors study versus, but maybe I'm wrong about that. But why would it matter that it's eight classes unless either those are part of an average that even if they take six, that it's going to be eight? So the average will be lower, or if it means something else. It's just not clear. I think the examples could be better, maybe calculated out, like the TPA example, lower in the same regulation, you know, with like a few different examples. It just takes extra pages, but just to make it more clear what it actually means. Then I think another thing that should be reviewed is the fairness of certain aspects of the regulation. So for example, zero hour, if you have a zero block, which JFK had, although for this year, seniors, it didn't matter as much because they were home during that year, when everybody had zero block. But for most years, zero block requires you to get to school. There's no transportation, is my understanding, so you're on your own to get there. So a student that is unable to do zero block is at a disadvantage because the rank rules allow you to count the top eight classes. Included in your eight classes that everybody takes is phys ed every year. Phys ed is an extraclass, the only extraclass typically taken by those at the top of the class, because most of them take R, honors, or APs. So I think you need to look, you know, if you want phys ed to rank, I have no problem with phys ed ranking, but then make it required to be ranked with everybody, not be able to be eliminated by some people and not others, because it creates an unfairness. But again, like I said, just look at how different aspects of the rank rules affect students in potentially an unfair way if it requires you to do something outside the normal. Then the last part, there was a footnote, which I can't find where it points anywhere in the footnote, and the footnote appears to be contradictory to the rest of the rule. So the rest, the rule says the best rank will be based on the student's best 40 credits. The footnote says that as of June 14th and for the class of 2016 and thereafter, which means all classes now, for, it says that the class rank will be based on a weighted GPA that will include all courses taken, but all courses is not the best 40 credits. So something is wrong and should be corrected. All right. So that's just the comments about that. If you want to ask me questions outside of the meeting, I'd be happy to give my comment. But I just think it's something to be looked at, clarified, to make it more clear. And, you know, on the, one issue is you could consider-
I'm sorry, Mr. Pinkowitz, your time is up.
All right.
Okay. Dr. Massimino?
Sure. Mr. Pinkowitz, I'm happy to work with Mr. Postorino to review those policies and, you know, if we have any questions, we'll happily reach out to you and engage in that discussion to clarify anything if we need to. With regarding the new four and five, the plan is for the scheduled enrollment that we would have been able to handle at the new four and five. I'm going to talk about the raw way. I don't want to get confused with the new and the old in sites. The plan that we have right now is for the construction we're going to do at the current site to be at least even what the original plan was to put it on Rawway Avenue. So we're working with the architects. Obviously, the process that got us here is something that we have to take a good, long, hard look at, you know, that was 30 months ago. So we're trying to figure out how we can best utilize and get the most bang for our bucks, so to speak. So the plan right now with the architects is to have an equal-sized program building that we originally had planned for. With regards to the land, we never took property to the land on Rawway Avenue. That was negotiated prior to my arrival. That's the way the contract was set up. We never officially took ownership of that land. So we don't own it.
Okay. Thanks.
Paul Lund, Hoplawn. Five-minute countdown. I want to thank Mr. Velez for responding to my Outlook invitation to the next parental rights info session. I also sent it out to the two other candidates, or three other candidates who are running for Board of Ed, Mr. Trebweiser, Mr., I'm going to say Mr. K., I apologize, I don't have his name handy.
Sedana.
And Mr., what was it?
A.J. Sedana.
Sedana. Oh, Sedana, and Mr. Maris, who responded. I do want to also mention, just in context, the nation's report card in 2019 came out with New Jersey's rankings as far as proficiency rankings in different subjects. Eighth graders were, 57% were below proficiency in reading, 56% below proficiency in math. And I just want to bring that up to give you why I started coming here, is I'm wondering why the sex ed piece and social-emotional learning seems to have become, you know, the big focus. Maybe it isn't. Maybe you guys do have a plan to help with all the learning loss that happened during COVID lockdown, to help recover, because 57% below proficient in reading, to me, that's a catastrophe. It makes me not trust the education system, and it makes me understand why parents might not trust how you handle other subjects like sexuality. I'm almost 60 years old now. I know I've been coming here and talking sex and race, and it's not my preferred topic, believe me, but it seems that's the obsession these days. Half the people claim that all this sexual education and instruction, they use a word that triggers a lot of people, is grooming students for sexual predators, but I don't believe that's the intent here. A lot of people have told me they believe it's protecting them, knowing the names, the medical names of their body parts in case they're touched in unwanted, in an unwanted manner. It's appropriate that they should be able to report on that. I understand both sides. I just fear that when you de-stigmatize all manner of sexual behavior, when you demystify even sexuality, that children will have a false confidence, that as easily as they'll learn to say no to unwanted sexual contact, they may be prompted to say yes to someone who is taking advantage of them emotionally. So I think it's a legitimate concern. I think there should be more conversation and more nuance in the conversation. You know, I do say, though, that it seems to me that enough school districts have stood up to the state at this point. East Hanover, most recently, is taking all the new comprehensive sex ed, consolidating it into the last day of school, and then parents, if they don't want their kids to be exposed, the kid doesn't show up. But at least the district is not penalized for not providing that information. I hear that the Murphy administration is now getting really rough and saying that if you don't implement every bit of what some people consider radical sex ed, you know, gender identity by grade two, that they will take you out of your home rule and step in. And I've also heard that they will use the old, you know, dollar sign as well, will take money out of the school system. I say, when it comes to the kids, you should be on the side of the kids, not on the side of knuckling under to what I consider a bully administration. I think I would just ask in closing, what are you doing to shore up all the learning loss that's occurred over this period of COVID? And also, I think the last question is, when it comes to opting out, do parents, I understood that all they had to do was send an email. Now I'm reading that they actually have to arrange an appointment, perhaps take off of work, to come and meet and discuss further why they don't want their kids exposed to this stuff. Can you bring clarity to that as well? Thank you very much.
All right. You're finished with your comments, Mr. Lund? Thank you. Dr. Massimino?
Mr. Lund, we've made significant contributions to shoring up, as you stated, the support staff that we have, whether it's adding academic coaches, changing curriculum, adding guidance counselors. That has been the goal. This is the start of my second year, so it hasn't been a long run to accomplish many of these tasks. But I'm a big believer in you meet with the administration, you meet with the faculty, and I've done that, because I think part of the solution is asking, you know, we know what the problem is, what do you need? Because obviously, every building and every individual school community may have a different need. So we've worked with them to do that, and I think we've done, we've started to do a good job. We've built a good foundation in terms of shoring that up. I have two kids in the system. I saw the pandemic up close and personal. I understand what the parents went through, and I saw the impact it had on students. So do I think, you know, everything's going to happen in a year? No, I don't. I think this is always a marathon, never a sprint. So I do think we've done that, and I think if you go through some of the work we've done last year with Mr. Postorino, Dr. Jen Corelli, Ms. Bear, Mr. Ali, different departments, different areas, we've made a strong commitment. In terms of the opt-out, parents can write a letter, they send it to the principal. We have instructed the principals and the administrators to reach out. I do think that is always an opportunity for dialogue, whether it's to talk to the parent about their concerns, maybe clarify some things, listen to their input. I welcome that dialogue between the parents and the school-level administrators and the school teachers. They're the ones delivering the information. There's a reason why we shared every health curriculum with all of our administrators and all of our teachers, many of whom are our parents in this district prior to adoption. The idea was to have open collaborative dialogue, because I do think it's something that needs to be discussed. So that's the process as it currently stands.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I'm next, John Vitarek, Woodbridge. There's a couple of things, usually, as you know, a lot of times do not agree with what is said over here, what is presented. But I do really believe it was the right decision on school four and five. You know, I was against it. I know the history of the site. I know there, how much time, how much money was spent on it to clear up a site. That's what cost so much more money, because a site probably never be cleaned to put the kids over there. It's a Celeste meeting, that's the most precious thing we got. We can't afford and not take a chance to put kids on a site if we don't know what's underneath it. But again, a question would be, how much money was spent to clean it, start to clean for at least two years over there? It was a lot. And I did say less council meeting to the mayor. I hope we don't run in the same situation we did with the community center, when they spent awful lot of money, left the site open, and taxpayers had to pay for it, which the guy never had a $6 million bond was supposed to have. And we build a community center, which is definitely losing money every year. And I said, are you going to build warehouses, or, you know, to build more apartments there? And you did say that you did not have possession of the property. And the question would be, how much money was spent and who paid for it? I understand the builder was supposed to pay for it, to build a school, because they're going to, they build a warehouse behind it, and that warehouse, that site, the city government supposed to pay for the school. Just to change a little bit more on the other thing, but I do believe schools should be where the kids are. You know, four and five school, and people say it's old. I said, so it's Princeton University, but nobody's standing down to build a new one simply else. It was, I think, the right decision, and I think that's where the kids are. I want to talk about the, who's our insurance carrier for the, for most of the school? Who's the carrier, who's, I know, who's actually the insurance carrier for this place? Another thing I would like to know, we talk about the schools. For years, we'd be talking over here, next to school, the parking lot, they want to build a 94 garden apartments, which I think that's a bad idea, next to kids. And we talk about it, how long's it going to take to build it? You're going to lose the parking space. And then it was you people that made it possible. I think it's a bad place to put apartments 50 feet from the schools, where the kids going to be running here and out, as I said before. They will have a lot of good people, and of course, maybe some bad people. It might put the kids in danger. It's not just putting them in danger by being in school, it puts them in danger when they leave the school. So that's the thing. I think it was a bad place to put apartments. And again, parking space, where are you going to park? Where can you park where the school's going to be built? It's going to take approximately a year. And then the other side of James Street, they talk about 150 units, a parking lot. And again, half of the parking lot could be used by developer for, and not more apartments. How are you expect to control that mess of traffic congestion? And how those kids are learning with all this construction going around? I just don't know what you people going to. But let me go to the DEI. Obviously, I see it's not a federal law, is it? I know if you are a pharmacist, and you're filling the medical marijuana prescriptions, you're paid more. Why? Because it's not a federal law. It puts a pharmacist danger, and of course, the company in danger. So they want to be covered, so they get more money. My question would be, does every teacher that go teach this stuff to the kids? And it's very dangerous, because as you know, not all the people, most of the people don't agree what you're doing. I'll be one of them. I would never want anybody else to teach my children, grandchildren, and at five, six, seven, eight years old, what you want to teach them. That's our job, that's a parent's job. A lot of people from foreign country, they came here. You better be very careful, very, very careful. The kid might go home, and I guess my teacher said, what's this, what's that, what's that? I don't mention that. I think it'd be very offensive to those people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vitarek. Time is up.
Thank you.
Two points I probably can address myself. That would be the school 11 property, as of right now, that property has not been sold. We don't have any new information on that property as of yet. When some information becomes available, we'll share it. As far as the medical marijuana pharmacy question, I don't really think the compensation, how that, the Board of Education doesn't have any standing on that.
My question would be, is the teacher, the teachers, the thing would get paid more in salary to take a chance to teach it, because those teachers would be in danger.
Okay. Well, I answered your question. Thank you, Mr. Vitarek. As far as the other portions of your questions, Dr. Massimino?
Mr. Vitarek, the money that was spent on Rawway Avenue was not for cleanup. The money that we have spent was for the design. So we have to submit applications, we have to have the surveys done, bring in engineers, third-party contractors. There's a number of assessments, and I would have to, I'll defer to Mr. Wolfman to run down the list, because obviously, that process started before my arrival, but I obviously dug in. That number's roughly $3 million, Mr. Wolfman?
Between 2.5 and 3 million.
Between 2.5 and 3 million, but that includes everything we paid for to have that site assessed for the school, transportation, everything. So the money that was spent there was for the planning and the design of the building. We had not, that money didn't go for cleanup. Obviously, we didn't put a shovel on the ground, so that money was spent for the planning over the course of 18 months.
I believe my question was, who paid for the cleanup so far? They spent months and months to clean-
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vitarek. No follow-up questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vitarek.
Tom Maris, Fort Worth, New Jersey. Just want to take a moment about something not even related to the school board for a moment, and congratulate Mr. Bush. I understand, listening to talk radio today, that Metcalf is one of the six communities in the United States being considered to be named the best community in the United States. If that happens, it's quite accomplishment, but even to be named, kudos to you, sir, and your community. I mean, we may differ politically on other issues, but that is still quite an accomplishment and speaks well for that community, which I've been involved in in the past with different organizations there. But nonetheless, let me move on. I want to thank Mr. Pinkowitz, too. I haven't seen him in a while. I know his two children went through the Woodbridge School System, apparently are now enrolled in colleges, but I appreciate his fervor for coming back here, even though his kids are out of school, and still bringing things to the board's attention that need to be addressed. And it's an indication that you don't have to have a, be a parent with children in school to be here and care about what is going on in our school district. In fact, I think we're going to see more and more people doing that right now, particularly in light of what's going on. And that brings me to my next topic. Here again, we have headlines. State Gets Tough on New Sex Ed Standards. School Districts That Refuse to Implement New Jersey's New Sex Education Standards Can Be Disciplined, The State Warned After Pushback From Small Number of School Boards and Community Governments. When did we give up the right to be American citizens? This board was formed to represent the people of this community, and yet you're being abrogated that responsibility by the state. And I know Mr. Bush has pushed the progressiveness of the state, but that's our right. We're here as parents or taxpayers or residents in this community to come to you and expect you to defend what we want, not what the state wants. I'm old enough to remember trials that went on after World War II about people that followed state orders. And they said, well, we're not guilty, we're just following orders. Is that where you come down? You're just going to let the state do this? What is your position on sex education? Are you going to follow the state mandates, or are you going to challenge it? Because I think as a community, we, pardon me, we would be behind you in finding that and saying, no, we don't want this. And the paper goes on, I mean, I understand this from the Home News Tribune, which tends to be on the liberal side anyway, but nonetheless, it does speak to other issues that relate to this. And one is, the Department of Education under Governor Phil Murphy made several changes to the sex education standards in 2020. The changes include introduction of more mature sexual terms in discussions about gender in early grades than previously standards. And at the conclusion, because I can't have the time to read all of this, the Atlantic City Board of County Commissioners, which is equal to what we have in Middlesex County, passed a resolution in May urging Governor Murphy and the New Jersey State Department of Education to cease from implementing their sexual education curriculum for grammar elementary school children, and require that all local school boards have public meetings to input on sexual education prior to implementation. And I want to know, is this school board going to do that? Are you going to stand up and allow the people in this town that pay for this place to even be here to have that opportunity to tell you what they feel? And if not, why not? I also support Mr. Lund and other organizations. He is the director of No Left Turn. He has a meeting on the 28th, and I would invite everybody to come out on that. Pro or con, because again, that's part of what we do as a free society. We have debates. We don't have them here, because you don't allow it. So we get the chance to speak, and if you choose to comment, you will. If you choose not to, then you ignore us. But nonetheless, we should have that right. We come here to present it to you, and hopefully that you'll respond in a way. And obviously, we have elections coming up. I'm not going to go into it, because I'm a candidate, and I'll just leave it there, because I don't want to make this political. But I am going to say, we have opinions, and they vary. And I hope the public realizes that there are choices. One other thing I want to bring out is, again, Mr. Trebweiser, last time, brought again that my speech, he found it offensive. Well, I'm sorry that he found it offensive. But I don't have to take my speech and make it like I'm selling something, that I'm a marketer. I'm telling you what I feel sincerely. And if you take offense to that, then come to me as a man- And if you take offense to that, then come to me as a man or a woman and explain why. But don't tell me after the fact that you took offense.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Your time is up.
Yeah, I'll listen to your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
No responses?
No.
Congratulations.
Hello. I just have a question regarding the curriculum for the sexual education. Is there a copy available that the teachers will be teaching for the fifth grade? I was on the website, and I did not find a copy, and I reached out to the counselor, and they did tell me after the meeting, whatever.
Just state your name for the record and the town you're from.
This is Sandeep.
And part of town?
Woodbridge, Seymour.
Thank you. Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to get a copy of the curriculum, what they're going to teach and the schedule, so this way I have an option to opt out on the days that I would not want my child to go in.
Okay, is that your only question tonight?
And second would be, will it affect their attendance if I choose to opt out? And that would be it.
Is that it? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I've said this before, I'm the board attorney, how are you? The board, there's nothing new this year about the ability of parents to opt out of sex education as there's been since, you know, I was a boy going to school, when you were in school. It's been the case since 1979 in the state of New Jersey, that you can opt out as a parent, your child opt out of the sex education curriculum. And obviously, no negative consequence academically could ever be brought against your child for that decision that you, as a parent or guardian, make on behalf of your child. So you don't have to worry about that at all. But again, I think that's something that needs to be clear for parents, that they have the ability to opt out.
So when you say opt out, is it like they're in the classroom and they're...
We, I'm sorry, and this isn't you, but we have to be, we want to make sure we get all the questions, and then we'll answer them. But I know that the superintendent of schools and other school administrators are here to answer your specific questions about your child. But I just want to say again, because we've already told other people that they've got their opportunity to speak, and then if you're done with questions, you're supposed to be done speaking. But we want to make it very clear, if you, on behalf of your child, have made a decision that your child not be part of the sex education curriculum, which is in large part required, and I think it's even acknowledged by other speakers today, by the state of New Jersey, then you have every right as a parent to do so. But again, I would encourage you to speak with the superintendent of schools, who's here after this meeting, and I'm sure he can answer any specific questions as to you and your family.
I can answer it now, counselor.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Sandeep?
Yes, correct.
So the idea of an opt-out is not for the students to not come to school, the idea is for them, they wouldn't be part of that lesson.
Okay.
So it does count against them, so I don't want to confuse it too. Anytime a student's not in, and Woodbridge Township follows the state standard, which there's not many excused absences, right? You could be sick and have a doctor's note, and by state definition, that's not an excused absence, although we recognize the fact that that's part of life and that's going to happen. Mr. Pastrino has done a lot of work on this, so I'm going to let him speak a little more specifically about the opt-outs. Everything was being adopted, so I'm going to let him speak to how you can review it and how that information becomes available to you.
So the copy of the curriculum, right? Correct, is that...
Well, we just, we don't make copies and give them out, so I'm going to let Mr. Pastrino explain it to you.
Sure. Thank you.
So in regard to the, so in regard to the opt-out, the reason that you wouldn't have been able to review it before is because the curriculum was adopted this evening. So in the curriculum's adoption, that's where we've encouraged all of our schools to have that conversation with the parents. We want them to have that opportunity to talk to the teachers, because the teachers are the ones that are delivering the instruction, which was in large part why we waited until now to adopt that curriculum. We wanted to give the teachers, who are also parents in our community, the opportunity to really go through, look at, and bring any of their concerns in regard to any of the new curriculum to our attention, in which we would absolutely address those concerns. Our goal is and always will be to produce age-appropriate instruction. So we do want our teachers to be comfortable teaching the material, as well as our families to be comfortable with those trusted adults teaching that material to your children. You can absolutely review it, and I would encourage you to do so. The opt-out, you really have the option of sending a letter. The purpose of encouraging that dialogue and conversation is just so that the teacher is really familiar with where you stand and what's being taught. The sequencing of that is absolutely provided in the curriculum guide, so you will have a sequence of when the lessons are being taught and what's being taught, and you can absolutely review that. And I think that's important, that you do do that, and you do that with a classroom teacher, or the counselor, or one of the administrators, or a representative from my office, to sit down and really go through that with you. In reviewing that curriculum, really, when you're taken out of that, as Dr. Massimino mentioned before, you're not taken out for the day. You know, that would be an absence from school. What the school would then be responsible to do would be to provide you an alternate assessment, or some type of, some type of setting where you weren't a part of that individual lesson. As far as what's being taught, it's important that the school knows, so that they're just familiar if those topics do come up, you know. That's the, that's the beauty of education, it really is unscripted. We don't know what the children are going to bring in, in terms of dialogue or conversations that happen in our classroom, but they want to be able to at least appropriately be able to identify and address, you know, your concerns by knowing their kids.
Okay, great. One more question if I can. There's a list of...
I'm sorry, if you have any other questions, you can call the superintendent's office or send them an email, okay?
Okay, sure.
All right. See the superintendent after the meeting also.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No other, see, no other comments? Dr. Massimino?
Yeah, I just want to share this. And this is in no small part in response to Mr. Harris's statement, because I was trying to find the question, and I think I have it. You're talking about standing up to something, an adoption of a state standard. And I think there's a couple of things that need to be stated there. One, I do believe there's been a lot of misinformation shared, and I do think this has been heavily politicized. And I say that with the idea of what I've read in the papers, and then what I've read on state websites, and what I've read from commissioner, those things have differed. And I, I think Mr. Lund, you know, spoke to that earlier, as there are going to be people that are passionate on both sides, and I respect that. I respect everybody's opinion. The other component is, there is a responsible way to adopt things. It doesn't mean that, I don't agree with everything that comes down, right? I have two children in the school district, I have two nieces, you know, I'll have a nephew soon, they're all in elementary school. So I have, I have family that are spread throughout, and I do believe there are topics that we are going to come across, that teachers are going to touch upon, that at home, we're going to have a conversation about in deeper fashion, right? And I think every family will always reserve that right, based on your cultural beliefs, your ethics, religion, what have you. And that, those conversations should happen at home. And I encourage parents, as much as I say, to read with your kids at home, to talk about them with their day and what they're learning. That happened when this didn't exist when I was young. It was the, how was your day? What did you learn? And nine times out of 10, when I asked that question, it was, good, nothing. You had a good day, but you learned nothing, teachers just did a bunch of things. I'm a teacher, your mom's a teacher. I do think there's a way to do it responsibly. And I do believe it should foster dialogue. And I do believe the parents that are concerned should reach out to the building principal and should speak with the teachers that are going to execute it. I don't think that not adopting something at all, and not having any dialogue, is a good thing either. And I feel very strongly about that, because then you start to walk a tightrope as to, when we don't agree with something, we simply just ignore it. And I think that's really dangerous. I'm always going to think that's dangerous. You know, I'm going to go back to what I said, Mr. Harris, in one of our first conversations at the admin building. You've toured the world, you told me all the countries you've been to. And my statement always is, how much diversity did you come across in traveling the world? And how wonderful would it be if the world was more tolerant of diversity and equity and inclusion as a result of being more informed? So as an educator, I'm always going to, I'm always going to stick to the idea of, yeah, whether it's an easy conversation or a difficult conversation, it's a worthwhile conversation. And I certainly didn't get into this to ignore things, I got into this with the idea of, if there is conversation, let's have it. I am not going to go back and forth with you about what the teachers do, because the teachers are going to do what they're, they've been trained to do, and have degrees, and are state-certified, and I do want them to talk to the parents. They talk to the parents about a whole host of things. There are people in this audience that I was lucky enough to have when I was a principal. And I am confident to say, yeah, we didn't agree on everything, but we had discussion about it. And that discussion always led to a resolution. I do think the conversation is worthwhile. I don't think we have to whitewash it and say, nope, because it might be something confrontational, or we are just not going to adopt it because we disagree. I like to go fast. If I had an ideal world, there'd be one lane where I could get in a really fast car and go, I love to go fast. But I recognize that if I go faster than certain speed limits, I run the risk of consequence. What I like, and what the rules are, there is something in the middle for me to figure out. I look at what we do here in education, and my goal, and the goal of this district, and I will, I will be reaffirmed in this every day, and the day I don't, is the day I should leave, is that we're always looking to have dialogue to further the education that we bring our students. And I do think parents are an integral part of that dialogue, and I encourage them to reach out to their building principal and their teacher. I will tell you, there are a lot of parents that have reached out to me to talk about how their teachers have, their students' teachers have helped them through a difficult time. So when we talk about trusted adults, I am always going to put teachers on that list. The reason why I wanted the staff to look at it is because so many of them are parents. So they do look at it with multiple hats on. I hear what you're saying, I respect everybody's opinion, but as an educator, I do believe whether the conversation is an easy one or a hard one, you have it. And you have it honestly, and you have it openly, because our kids deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino.
Mr. President, I'd just say one quick thing.
Mr. Trebuser?
There are just a couple of things. DEI is something that we have taught in our district for many, many years. We just finally put a label on it. Before that, it was called character education, and nobody seemed to have an issue with it. It was never referred to as any other type of thing than to try and make a group of people, our students, become more accepting and more tolerant of those that are not exactly like them. And I don't believe that there are many people in our community, if anyone in our community, that doesn't want to raise a bunch of children to be accepting, tolerant, and to look at people, not be colorblind, but to not be put off because they're different than what they look like when they look in a mirror. The other thing I find a little troubling is that I keep hearing everybody talking about sex education. And my understanding is, this is a health curriculum. Does it talk about topics that may have to do with sexual situations, or sexual in regards to body parts? Yeah, it probably does. And they did it since I went to school, which is probably longer than most everybody else in the room, other than maybe one person. But that's like saying that when you teach the Holocaust, you're teaching people to be anti-Semitic. And I don't think that's the case. I think when you give people exposure, and you have professionals like our teachers and our certified staff, they differentiate the teacher, teaching based on what they hear from the students. They may say something to a student, and to an entire class, and there is no questions, and nothing further is said, and it's just briefly talked about in a cursory manner. And then you may have a group that is extremely interested in a specific topic, and they ask lots of questions. And the teachers, who I believe are very competent and capable at what they do, will stand there, and they will direct the conversation in an age-appropriate fashion. And I just think it's important for us to clarify that, because as Dr. Massimino said, there is a lot of unfortunate politics in everything, and I understand that. But this is really about our kids, and about them getting a very broad and well-rounded education, so that they can become outstanding citizens for our country. So that's all I really had to say, but thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Trebuser. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some motion?
Motion by Mr. Molnar, second by Mr. Harris. Full in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.